Okay. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, Board of Adjustment. Today is Wednesday, September 24th, 2025, and it's 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it's being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-SE of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act.
Please stand. I'm sorry, vote call please.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. DeCros. Mr. Musarella.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Present.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
Chairman Gragnani.
Present.
We have our Board Planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our Board Engineer, Mr. Lemanowicz.
Yeah.
And our Board Attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Could you please stand and join with us for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public who stands as one nation under God, indivisible, eternal, infinite, eternal.
Mr. Chadwick, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on something other than
is on our agenda this evening? I see none. Nora, correspondence, please. We have two pieces of correspondence. One from Attorney Joseph O'Neill, dated September 19, 2025, requesting an approval of an extension of approval for application 2204 for a period of one year from October 28th, 2025 to October 28th, 2026.
A year.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
Do you want to extend for a year?
Okay.
Okay, and then we have...
You're done?
Good afternoon, Mr. O'Neill.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Counselor.
We also have correspondence received from Amanda Wolf, Esquire, requesting application 2417 to be carried from September 24th, 2025 to January 14th, 2026 with notice and grants the Board an extension of time to make decision on the case through January 31st, 2026. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, and we do have some resolutions. The first one will do separate. Those who can vote are Berkowitz, Musarella, Reddy, and Willins. Application 2522, desai. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Musarella.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
And then the other two resolutions we can do together. People, those who can vote are Berkowitz, DeCros, Reddy, Willins, and Gragnani. Application 2530, Atel, and 2526, Keen. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
DeCros.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Yes. Application 2533, Suzanne McLoughlin, 81 Nokomis Avenue, Block 520, Lot 3, Zone R4. A C variance to install a shed contrary to Section 430-10, C, side and rear yards, Section 430-10, I, and Section 430-35, Column 10. Mr. McLoughlin?
Can you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay.
Great, say your name, spell your last name, please.
Suzanne McLoughlin.
Make sure you use the microphone.
Suzanne McLoughlin, M-C-L-A-U-D-H-L-I-N.
Great, tell the Board what it is that you'd like to do.
I would like to install a shed against, well, within about a foot of the fence in the corner of my lot, which would be closer to the edge of my property line than six feet. Because if I put it six feet away from the edge, it would be in the middle of my backyard. I would like it not to be.
Your plan says it's going to be three feet.
Yes.
From each, you said a foot.
Well, that's the fence, but not the property line. I think it is, I'm just, sorry, pulling up the drawing that I've got right now.
So it'll be three feet off the property line?
Yes. Which the fence is, I think, two feet in.
It's not going to be an issue.
I just wanted it to be in the corner instead of...
Is there any landscaping along the back or beside your property? Edges, something like that?
The neighbors have a retaining wall that's on their side of the...
Behind you.
Behind me, yes. And then on the side of my house is the parking lot with weeds. A parking lot, and there's some weeds.
That retaining wall behind you is one foot high, 10 feet high?
Oh, I don't know the exact measurement. I would say three feet high. And it's well back. It's wide enough that you can walk behind the fence.
There any questions from the Board?
Ms. McLoughlin, just going back to your dimensioning, you said that the fence is two feet off the property line?
I don't know exactly. I think that's what it was. It's been about a few years since I had a resolution.
Okay, because the survey you had, okay, the survey you had is from 2017. When was the fence installed?
The fence was installed last summer.
Okay, so this, this survey does not show the current location of the fence that you're speaking of?
The, it was a replacement fence.
Okay, because the survey shows the fence to be on the line, not two feet away from it. If you go to the back right corner, it says CLF online. That means chain link fence online.
There...
You're saying it was put where the old fence was?
Yes, but there wasn't a chain link fence. It was a wooden fence.
That's fine. What I'm saying is you said it was two feet off the line, and the survey says it's on the line.
I'm going, I might, I might have the wrong marker. I think I found the spike, but if this is what the survey says, then I would go with what the survey says.
Okay, we just have to establish what the distance from the property line is.
I think three feet is de minimis in nature. It still works on the drawing, though. You could move it a little closer to the house in the yard a little bit more, no?
The other problem is that we put in a French drain so that it would, to handle water coming in from the parking lot that's next to us and behind us.
Okay.
And I don't want to block the drain over there.
No, I'm sure, sure you're not. And the French drain is located where?
The French drain is located, if I may, can I?
Sure.
Sure.
Because it's not shown on the survey at all.
Sorry, I...
Okay, that's all right.
It would be, the French drain starts here and it goes about like here, and then it bends down to this way. So it comes like...
So if you move it in or over, it's going to approach on the French drain?
I wanted to make sure that it...
Okay.
I wanted to see it in that direction.
So if you're looking at your survey, the French drain starts in the upper left-hand corner of your property, is that right?
Starts from the left-hand corner, yes. And it goes...
Yeah, no cross.
45 degree angle is?
Diagonally across the backyard.
And then it goes down along the side of the house to join up with a storm drain that's up by the front of the property, right corner of the house.
Great, thank you.
That's the reason for three feet, okay?
Yes.
So I think it's fairly de minimis request, but the French drain, and I'll be open to your application.
Just one quick question. Is there, is there a slab there, or are you putting a slab down, or are you just putting a shed right on a ground?
I'm putting the shed on the ground.
Okay.
Good question.
That's why the shed can just be necessary.
Are there any other questions from the Board? Someone like to frame a resolution, please? Oh, excuse me. Any questions from the audience on this application and this, this testimony only?
Application 25, Column 33, Suzanne McLean, 81 Nokomi Avenue, Block 520, Lot Number 3, Zone R-4, to issue or grant a C variance to install shed contrary to Section 430-10, C, side and rear as discussed, and Section 430-10, I, and Section 430-35, Column 10.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
DeCros.
Yes.
Musarella.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yep.
Gragnani.
Yes. You will be hearing from the zoning board, and at that time, you can come into the office and apply for your applications.
Thank you so very much.
Enjoy the shed.
Absolutely, thank you. Have a lovely day.
You're the same.
I have an extra copy of this.
Okay.
Application 25, Colon 36, Haddick, 37 Calumet Avenue, Block 533, Lot 7, Zone R4. A C variance to construct/legalize a shed proposed on existing concrete pad. Legalize patio proposed contrary to Section 430-10, C, shed and side and rear, Section 430-35, Column 10, and Section 430-35, I'm sorry, Section 430-35, Column 13. Sir?
Can you raise your right hand, please? If you're both going to testify, then both raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth? State your name, I'd like to start with you, sir.
My name is Tachim Parik.
And how do you spell your last name?
P-A-R-I-K.
And you, sir?
My name is Bhavin Gandhi. I'm a brother-in-law.
Okay. Okay, why don't you tell the Board what it is that you'd like to do?
May I go?
Sure. What's your relationship to the application?
Brother-in-law.
Brother-in-law, okay. Do you live in the same house?
No.
Okay, but you're here on his behalf to help him with the application?
On helping him out with the conversation as he doesn't know, never dealt with the Board before.
Okay.
So just helping him out with the application. It's pretty much the same application we had, like, similar state construction.
Would you pull the microphone closer, please?
They're planning to put a shade on their property to help with the gardening equipment and other stuff.
Okay. Do you know if he has seen this letter from the township engineer?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know if he has talked to anyone about what measures might be required to satisfy the township engineer?
Yes, he spoke to, he has applied for the zoning permit for the shade construction because they are having, it's on the backside of their property, and the variance they requested is to put the shade in the property, close to the property line, about one and a half feet. They put a, they were on the concrete pad and putting a vinyl shade on top of it.
Mr. Gandhi, can you pull up? So, my question, though, was, has anyone talked to either the municipal engineer or anyone else about what stormwater management measures might be required?
I haven't seen that later, but I'll check with...
It's a letter dated August 26th, 2025. Did you have that letter?
Yes.
In short, you know, the design and details of the stormwater management measures must be provided to this office for review and approval.
Okay.
Have you applied for any stormwater management plan?
No.
Then, then that's what this request of you to do before you proceed.
Okay.
If you proceed and don't do that, and then it costs them a lot of money to...
No, no, I understand that. I just was requesting the similar approval, like the application just before. There's the variance to put the shade.
Two different situations.
Right, two different situations is right. You know, you, you have a patio here as well that is not, you're asking for it to be legalized?
No, the, I... May I show you the certified survey when he bought the property?
That survey doesn't make something legal.
No.
If it was never approved...
It was never approved.
Approved, then just the fact that he bought the property, it was there, doesn't make it legal.
Right.
We understand that, but...
But the, the issue you're missing is the Board is concerned that, you say, subject to the town engineer, the town engineer comes up with a requirement that is thousands of dollars, you know, just something, something that just you can't handle, because it makes sense. You're, you're wasting your time here and you're wasting the Board's time. So I think it's important, you meet with the engineer, find out that it's just a simple little drywall that isn't going to be that expensive, or it's a pipe taking stormwater out of the street, whatever it might be, and postpone this meeting and just carry it to a, I don't know, date maybe it fits.
It can carry to November 5th at 7:00 PM.
All right.
And it would be wise for you to talk to the engineer?
Mm-hmm.
Because we need a report from him saying what you're going to do, as opposed to, right now, he's saying, better come and talk to me and find out what the problem is.
So, like, November 5th is like five weeks from now?
Five weeks from now.
So, do you think it is feasible for you to get the...
Yeah, we'll set up a meeting with town engineer and get the stormwater issue resolved. As proposed, I just want to mention to the Board, the area where we are proposing the Board was previously completely disturbed, and it wasn't like a lawn or like a vegetated area. It was a completely disturbed area. On the survey, you can see the stone like laying around with the, all like a disturbed land and waste material out sitting out there for years. So, all, the whole purpose is for them to finally use their property and the backyard in a proper way. So, instead of looking at like the years of the construction debris and other stuff filed over the years before they bought the property on that location, they just wanted to clean up, put some lawn, and put a shade so it was in location. So, most likely, the stormwater effect in looking may be very significant because we're not changing the cover type. In fact, he's employing the cover, he put the, come along there, he put like a little retaining wall, and put the lawn and clean the area and cut it.
We understand that.
You should take pictures of what you just described to the engineer when he's there, because that may have a big factor in terms of what he would require.
Okay, so just, just so I'm reading this right, too. So there's a concrete pad there that's not legalized as well?
That's where, it's a confusion, because when we, he bought the property, like, 2020, from a builder, it was a redevelopment project in the town, so it was, our assumption is that builder who bought it went through the...
Not a good assumption.
Yeah, but I'm just asking, that's got to be legalized.
It was approved by the town, because we bought the new construction house, so...
Okay, it might not, doesn't mean it was approved by the town, they could have put that in anyway.
So, that was the assumption as a home buyer for them.
We've, we've suggested that you speak with the engineering department, and we've carried the application to November the 5th at 7:00 PM, not 7:30, 7:00 PM. So we'll see you then.
Well, the special meeting is for you.
And I really appreciate Board's recommendation, everyone of you, and really appreciate it.
The survey. You need a motion? Move.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Nora? Berkowitz?
Yes.
Excuse me, yes.
DeCros.
Yes.
Musarella.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Gragnani. Yes.
Okay. Get that meeting with the engineer as soon as you can.
Application 2542, Franciscan Sister.
What happened to your husband?
Excuse me?
Mohammed?
No.
That's off?
That's all, yes. Application 25, Colon 42, Franciscan Sister of St. Elizabeth, 499 Park Road, Block 166, Lots 135.1. Preliminary and final major site plan, major soil moving permits.
May I, Madam Chairman, members of the Board, this is William Strasser, Strasser Associates, appearing on behalf of the Franciscan Sisters of St. Elizabeth. Madam Chairman, members of the Board, this is an application regarding 499 Park Road, Parsippany, of the site which these sisters own, is a 25 acres. They currently operate a religious school on the premises, a school, and the common is used for religious purposes. So as your planner has pointed out, we have an currently beneficial use on the site which the sisters are located on. The application mainly directs itself to, we were with two trailers back in the early 2000s when construction was running high and the economic market was not good. The sisters purchased, and we came before this Board to get permission to install two trailers to be utilized as classrooms to the rear of the existing school, which is on basically the east side of the property. Those trailers, we came in and we had those modified to a permanent structure, there was a base put in. Basically, though, trailers were temporary, the construction was light, the environmental issues related to the trailers was not good. And as a result, over the years, the trailers have been there, they are basically have been increased in value in terms of economically and also environmentally. As a result, the sisters have made this application to remove those trailers, demolish them, and construct a two-story classroom building consisting of six classrooms on the site, which would be in addition and connected to the existing school building. The building itself will be 26 students in each of those six classrooms, for a total of 156 in the new building. Right now, the sisters have no plans, you hear testimony from Sister Alice, who's the principal. There's 303 students who are currently enrolled at the school. One very important point, which was pointed out by your engineer, we will have no, and you'll hear this testimony, we'll have no students in the cafeteria, the all-purpose room, or the library. Currently, because of the shortage of space, there are students in the cafeteria area. Those students will be removed. Those areas will not be utilized for purposes of instruction or any type of classrooms. Under the state regulations of 35 square feet per child, the school will, once these classroom buildings are built, will maximize at 372 students, which is basically controlled by the state. That transmits into a requirement of 75 parking spaces. You hear testimony from our engineer that there are currently 105 parking spaces on site. We do have an overabundance of parking spaces. In terms of the application, I have with me our engineer, Mr. Bill Scott, who has been in touch with your engineer, and I'm, right now, I'd like to present Sister Alice, who's the principal of the school, for some brief presentation, as he can give you a background and what's going on at the site at this current time. Sister Alice.
Six...
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
You stay close to that, Mike.
Mr. Strasser, can you tell me what your position is at the Franciscan Sisters of St. Elizabeth, and also at St. Elizabeth Nursery and Montessori School?
I'm a, I'm a member of the Franciscan Sisters of St. Elizabeth, and I'm the principal of St. Elizabeth's School.
And with regard to the school, can you tell us what goes on and what's the curriculum at this school very briefly?
We have Montessori and traditional classrooms there. Two and a half years old, two sixth grade students we are educating every day.
And can you tell us, and you heard the introduction, is it the purpose of your application by the sisters to remove the existing trailers which are serving as classrooms in the back of the building?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and you understand also that the plan that's been proposed is a two-story building with six classrooms in it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Now, can you tell me how many students there are currently enrolled at the school?
Right now, we have 303 students.
And Sister, you're aware that the requirement for the state is in classrooms, it's 35 square feet per child, is that correct?
It is correct.
So, in the event that this application were granted, there will be a total perimeter of classroom space, maybe if there are 372 students, it would be a total of 175 spaces, parking spaces that would be required, is that right?
Yes.
And with regard to the parking on the site, has there ever been a parking issue where any of the parents dropping off their children? Very frequently described how the parents drop their children off.
The parents come into the front side of the school, and they have upper parking lot, and the staff has the parking lot behind the school. Parents have, they go up the hill, and they have parking lot, left side of the property. And there are inner parking, parking spaces, so we have no problem.
And Sister, you heard my introduction, right now, there are currently students in the cafeteria space for classrooms, is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you tell me if this application were granted, are those students going to move to the classrooms in the building?
Yes, that's our plan right now, yes.
And if the application's granted, will, will any of these classes, educational classes, will they be held in any of the, of the classrooms? Will they be held in cafeteria, the all-purpose room, or the library?
No, library has library going on, classes, but cafeteria and the multi-purpose room will not have classes.
Sure.
Question?
I have a question. Sister, the portable classrooms, there's two?
Yes.
Are they being utilized now?
Well, once in a while, the, we go, when we have the breakout session, once in a while, we go and use it, but we don't have it just...
So, so that's why you're using the cafeteria and the all-purpose room?
We already moved the students from there, so that if the plan approaches, we can all, and start. So yes, that's why we are using it.
Is there, is there any specific reason you're not using the trailers that are there now? Are they decrepit, or is there falling apart?
Not that bad, but we want to make sure, because the school started already, so we don't want the changes in between, in the middle of the school age, so we said from the beginning, let's move, so that it doesn't disturb the education of the students.
Thank you.
Just for the record, the, once, if you go through with this project, is it to attempt to remove the trailers from the property?
Yes.
So they'll be totally demolished, and this new building is where the trailers are currently located?
I didn't know if you planned on putting them somewhere else on the property.
No, they'll be gone. They're not going to save. We got a good deal on them back in early 2000s, early 35,000 trailers.
Any additional questions from the Board?
Okay, you know what? Just so I'm clear, the, with this new building, the maximum number of students will be 372, right?
372, based on square meters in the classroom, and that's the state requirements of 35 square feet per child.
Okay.
And that's mandated by the state?
That's the whole thing. That's the whole thing, including 156, which are permitted in the new building.
And that doesn't have anything to do with the cafeteria or all-purpose room?
No, if we're going to use this question, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to use it, and if we did, we have to come back.
Any other questions from the Board? Any questions?
I just, can I just ask?
Yes, please.
Mr. Lemanowicz, does that satisfy, at least in part, your 4A comment in your report?
Yes, with respect, with respect to the parking, that, that'll cover it.
Okay.
Is, is there any intent to clear any of the wooded areas on the property, or you're going to build right on the footprint for the, where the trailers are?
Chadwick, I think our engineer could speak to that. I, the initial answer to that, from what I'm very wary of property, no, because there's a trap wall.
It didn't look like it was going to, but I just...
Mr. Scott will address that.
Are there any other questions from Sister? In the audience? I see none, hear none.
They asked a question, we got a problem.
Yes. Sir?
Sister, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm sure for the, we'll call Mr. Phil Scott, who's our engineer.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. State your name, spell your last name, please.
William Scott, that's the OP taking.
And you can sit, or you can, if you want, if you're going to use your...
I'm going to try to stand as long as you can hear me.
Sure, take the microphone with you.
Mr. Scott, what is your occupation, please? Mr. Scott, what is your occupation, please?
I am a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
And how long have you been selling license in the state of New Jersey?
Twenty-one years.
And have you appeared before numerous planning boards and for important adjustments in the course of your practice?
Yes, several dozen throughout central New Jersey, and I've appeared before the zoning board, of course, at the, on two prior occasions.
Disqualified.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Scott, could you please just briefly describe the application and what board has decided?
Sure, I think it would be helpful if you have our site plan set. If you turn to sheet three, which I'll bring up for you. Sheet three is a topographic survey of a portion of the site centered around the existing building, the school close to Park Road. And what I've done is I've superimposed the footprint of the proposed addition in green over the existing conditions, so you can see the scope, scale of what we're doing and how it fits into what exists out there now. You'll see the, the trailers here, basically centered on the middle of the footprint of the addition. Everything you see in green is proposed building. You'll see a dimension of 285 feet to the property line from, from that area. And then I'll just ask you to change to sheet number five, if you could, and this is a blow-up of the project. The orientation has changed, so now you're, you're looking at the proposed addition on the left side of the plan. The existing school is to the bottom of the plan. To the right of the plan is the existing parking lot, which we are proposing to reconstruct. We're proposing to provide proper pedestrian access, ADA access, striping. The proposed addition was located by the architect. The main driver of the location was to match the existing corridor, which one runs down the center of the school. So within each floor of the addition, you can open two doors and the children would have access if they needed to immediately get to the front of the building. The basement floor matches the ground floor, and the first floor matches the first floor of the existing structure. So there's no steps which will interrupt the flow between the structures. We're proposing some site lighting centered on an island in the middle of the parking lot, provide proper downlighting.
There's none there now?
There is a, a light there now. It doesn't properly light the parking lot.
Will that be a nice improvement?
Yes, this is a downlighting LED, dark sky compliant, I'm not...
And there's no neighborhood impact, anyway.
Not within over 250 feet. We're providing a storms, stormwater management system to the rear of the building. What we're going to do is provide buried 36-inch piping within stone beds, which will receive the roof drains from the addition, and these will be sized to accommodate the requirements of the major stormwater management requirements from the state.
You're not looking for any variances here on that anyway, right?
Not for stormwater, no. We have several access points, which will allow the students to leave from the lower level here, they can come on sidewalk, back around to the play area, and then we have access from the parking lot to either the first floor of the addition or the first floor of the existing, existing school. So in nutshell, it's very briefly what we're proposing. The overall addition footprint is just over 4,800 square feet.
Mr. Scott, can you just, just to chat with some of the trees that were removed?
Oh, I'm sorry, of course.
Were you moving any trees to the rear, the east?
Yeah, so, so just behind the trailers now, there's a boulder wall that exists. What we're proposing is to basically shift that boulder wall towards, towards the wooded area about 10 to 15 feet. We need to do that to provide enough room for our stormwater management, since that's the lowest area we have to bring the water towards, so we will be taking down in the area of eight to 10 trees.
There'll still be a substantial wooded area, right?
Yes, I also am proposing some evergreen trees along the back of the building as well.
Okay. To replace them or would you take it down?
I have two Norway spruce trees to the rear, which over time should provide some screening. And between the parking lot and the building, we have some marborite and deciduous trees.
Can you see those trailers from the outside now? Maybe?
I mean, depends on time of year.
Quite a ways.
Yeah.
From what point of the outside?
They're, they're in the back.
Yeah, okay.
And the elevation, it's much higher. The, the next house, which Mr. Scott testified to, is 285 feet, and it's a lower, the elevation's much higher than the adjoining house.
So this, this structure, again, the, we're matching the lower level of the existing school, so we're actually going to excavate down for the addition, so it won't be two stories up above.
And the two stories are within the zoning requirements, no elevation issues on the height?
There was a, there was a request for clarity on that from Mr. Lemanowicz.
And what was the clarity?
The clarity is that I believe we're going to be compliant. Our building height should be about 32 and a half feet.
So the bottom line is, you're not asking for a variance for height?
No.
Just a note on that, is that the, the architect shows the height to the peak, and the height's supposed to be to the midpoint. So they just didn't speak to one another, but it, it looks like it's compliant. But it just, I wanted just to make sure that, that the plan spoke to each other and that everything agreed to show that.
Yeah, we would certainly have the architect's plan revised to have that dimension, and I did, I went into his CAD file and measured that exactly, so I'm very confident about that number.
Good. Now, how long's it going to take to build that? The sisters are listening, by the way.
Luckily, construction is not my department.
I'm...
Yeah.
So right now, right now, all of the students are squeezed into the current existing school, okay, and they will be staying in there while this is being built, right?
Right.
Okay? And then when that's built, they can filter out and get out of the cafeteria and gather anywhere. Is that the plan?
Yeah, and we've designed the addition to allow for that, so it can be separated from the school very easily during the construction.
Okay, that's where I was going with that, yes.
That, that's why I asked about the portable classrooms, were they being utilized now? Because during construction, they'll all be within the cafeteria and the...
They're all in there now, as I understand it.
Yeah, well, she said on occasion she uses it.
It's just a, that we get the application moving a lot faster. We have two teachers a couple of times now, but the transition gets over.
I think Sister...
Children would be very happy to come in with the trailers.
Yes, I'm sure, especially in the winter, yeah.
Excuse me, I think Sister would like to...
Sister would like to just stay there.
Yes.
Just remember.
Actually, what did, we brought the children, we have another building, the villa, so that was used as a half-day, and we weren't using it, so a group of students we have there. So the children are not squeezed in, they are, they have enough room.
So they're there until the addition is...
The early childhood class, we moved to the villa, and the elementary who was using the portable, so they are using the early childhood's classroom and cafeteria, so they have, they have no problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott, on your zoning requirement table on the front page of your plans, you've got a number of permit, you've got a variance request for number of permitted principal uses. Can you explain, is that, and I'm also referencing 4A of Mr. Lemanowicz's report, because it's my understanding based upon Mr. Lemanowicz's report, that this is a conditional, conditionally approved use, as long as there's enough parking? Is that...
Well, I thought it was just right, there was no parking issue.
I, I just, I just want to drill down on, to make sure that there's no use variance that you're requesting. Because that's what...
I think what it was, was a, it was a, the expansion of a non-conforming use, whether the two uses, and the school is previously non-conforming, and that's why we published for that.
Right, understood. So you're not requesting a use variance?
Not requesting, just expansion of non-conforming, that's all.
Understood, and it's...
Use is not changing the problem.
Right, and it complies for the use as a, conditional use as a school, because the parking is adequate.
Well, that's why I put in that I consider it's narrowly beneficial, because the burden then shifts to, for you to show that there's no substantial impact, and I think your testimony is done with that. So I would, I would say you put a testimony in for use variance for expansion of non-conforming.
Great. And you don't, and you don't see any issues with that, correct?
No.
Got it.
Mr. Scott, just in your professional opinion, do you, you see any substantial impact when you join property, or are you joining properties if this application were granted?
I don't, and I do see an actual benefit by the installation of the enhanced stormwater system.
Any other questions from the board? Are there any questions from the audience of Mr. Scott's testimony? Oh. They see that.
Madam Chairwoman, could I just ask Mr. Lemanowicz another question, please? I'm sorry. Mr. Lemanowicz, in your report, you indicated some concern with respect to the aisle width.
Yeah, there's a few items that, since the letter was written, Mr. Scott and I have talked, and he exchanged some, or some revisions to see if they would satisfy the comments. And basically, the comments that I had can be satisfied, he showed that they can be. It's not made into a, a formal plan yet, but it's, I, I'm confident that they can address, he's going to address that aisle width issue. Also, the drainage has some issues that have to be addressed. This is a major development, which, the reason it's a major development is because the, the regulations state that if you disturb more than an acre cumulatively since February of 2004, that you become a major development. So because of prior projects on the property, this is now, it triggers a major, which is why we have to go to a little more extensive stormwater management system. And Mr. Scott has, has, has done a first draft of a compliant stormwater management system. It looks like we'll be able to trim that down a little bit, so what I'm, what I'm seeing now, what Mr. Scott has shown me seems to be a little bit more than what's required, and it still fits. So if the board is so inclined to approve this application, I would have no issue with the condition simply being that the applicant resolve the, any outstanding drainage issues with myself, and rather than come back for information that, about drainage, which puts most people to sleep when we talk about it anyway.
Sounds good. Do you have the same opinion with respect to the parking area, interior driveway issue that you represent in your report?
Yes.
Okay, so it may not, it may be that a variance isn't needed pursuant to 4B and C in your report? Is that accurate, or...
4B and C, correct. Those have been, those, I don't believe those are going to be required.
Okay, I just want to make sure I got, I captured all the variances that are being requested.
Yeah, the only thing we haven't touched on yet is the height of the fences and the walls and such.
So those are still need variances, right?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Yep, okay.
The other issue also is, is previously, it's been there for years, is the playground of the front, it's a flats on the street, and it's a, it's a non-conforming, it was approved years ago by the board. That's the playground, which is right on, right on Park Road.
So that was previously approved?
Previously approved, yes, on the site plan, the application, we did build the school back in 2001, I was before the board.
Gotcha, so we don't need to deal with it now?
It's previously non-conforming, we did list it as a, just a continuation, continuation of a, of a non-conforming use.
Okay, so the only variances are the ones referenced in sections 4E and 4F of Mr. Lemanowicz's report? Is that accurate, or do you need any other variances?
Well, it's the expansion of the non-conform...
Right, that.
Yep.
Anything else?
So in terms of, like, bulk variances, that's all you needed, those two?
Yeah, the 4E is the fences and walls, maximum height. Because of the elevations, the proposal on the plan is all height is 13 feet. Because of that, as Mr. Scott described, there has to be a, the excavation down to match the, the actual grade. And the retaining wall F is, tenable is next is six feet in height to be tiered. Mr. Scott, you can testify, are there areas that can be tiered to address Mr. Lemanowicz's concern?
The, again, the, the grade changes from the existing parking lot to, down to the basement level of, of the addition. So to accommodate that change, we have a retaining wall that's proposed alongside the sidewalk. Right now, I, I could potentially shift that wall and create a tiered wall, however, I'm going to eat into my planting area. So my vision of what the parking lot would be, would be screening to block the fencing, which would be along the wall. If I tier the walls, I'll still need the fencing, and I will have a deficit of landscaping, I feel.
How high is the wall?
At the rear of the building, it, it tapers to grade. It rises to six feet. To the middle of the wall, it's eight feet. At the corner of the wall here, it's 10. And then at this point, you actually climb a series of steps and enter over the top of the lower level, so it's basically like a landing that goes, goes over the basement entrance. So that's, that's the full difference between the two floors that are exposed, that's 13, just at this point.
Just, just the board's information, I mean, Mr. Scott, that, that landscaped area between the building and the parking lot, okay, that's the wall we're talking about?
Right.
So right now, the, the low, the low side of the wall is against the building, so that sidewalk, there's a sidewalk between the building and that landscaped area, that's kind of in a, a valley, we'll call it. So if, if you would have tiered that wall back and plant, plant the platform or the flat area between the tiers, only people in the building would see that landscaping. So if you made it one wall, all the landscape would be up on top, shielding the building from the parking lot. So, you know, the tiering is a requirement, but I think in this case, the purpose of that, and the purpose is to soften the view of the wall, but the issue is nobody's going to see that wall.
Chair, we have no problem with Mr. Scott and Lemanowicz, as a condition, we just work out, any, any details which are satisfactory, Mr. Scott.
And the only other thing is, now, because this is a major soil moving, you're going to have to come back to the board to get that approved, and it's over 1,500 yards, which means you also have to go to town council, unless you can get it under 1,500 yards, you're at, I think, 1,620. So I don't know if you can get it under, in, in, in dealing with that.
We did notice, we submitted the application on that too, so I can have Mr. Scott...
Oh, okay, I did, I did not?
Yeah, we did, we noticed, and we submitted soil movement, maybe 16. Mr. Scott, when you go into the soil movement, can you tell us, when you go into the application, tell us the amount of soil which will be exported or imported inside as a result of the excavation?
I, I believe it was in the area of 1,650 cubic yards, I don't have the...
Okay, I'm going to give you, and show you what's dangerous, uh, from the perfect, which was period conjunction of your information.
Uh, 1,620 cubic yards.
And that encompasses the entire excavation for the proposed new structure, is that right?
Yes. Take a hard look at it, since we're doing some revisions to the stormwater management, if we can get it under the 1,500 cubic yards, we'll certainly give our best effort.
I don't, did you get a response from the tech? I don't, did you get a response from the town, because I don't review the soil moving, the township engineer does, did you get a response from that permit application?
I didn't see it, Mr. Lemanowicz, I didn't see it.
I, I have a letter in my package, dated February 4th, 2025.
Yes, I just found that.
I think that speaks to it, right?
Do we have that?
No objections to... Okay, so that would take care of that, the board wants to move on that also, but it's still a council issue, unless in revising the drainage and such that we've done, that we're, we've been talking about, if that number changes, then you might not, if you can get down to 1,500, then you have to go to council.
Good, Mr. Scott will take a look at that.
Yes, I have a question for you. I just noticed on here that my son and daughter-in-law live within 200 feet, and I didn't notice that till I just opened up the, the drawing and...
Well, you don't live within 200.
He's 1, 189 Park Road.
I don't think that's legally in conflict, but if you feel that it is...
Well, I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention, so nothing is ever said.
We have no objection.
Okay, I appreciate that.
To the living man.
If, if someone wanted to say something, they would.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up.
You know that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Crooks.
Your children, do they attend the school?
Yes, they do, not, not the Montessori, they're, she's in high school, the other one just started college, so...
All right, have you covered all the variances you're requesting?
I think we have, yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Any other questions in the audience of Mr. Scott's testimony only? I see none, I hear none. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
I'm sure I have no further witnesses.
Okay. Do they have, they have to come back to us for soil removing?
No, don't.
No.
They don't have to come back.
Back for us?
No, no, they're good on the soil moving. The permit was applied for, and you've got the comment from the township engineer.
Okay, would someone like to make a recommendation?
You have an architect here, you've decided not to call him, is that accurate?
We've, we've decided not to call him, council, Mr. O'Leary said we had to, originally we had 20 minutes, we extended to a half hour, I have to create a record, I'll bring everyone in, it's going to be a three-hour show, but, no, we, we did not bring him, but I, we didn't answer the questions of the board, is there a question?
Understood, I just wanted to make sure.
Would someone like to make a recommendation to approve this application, please?
Was it me? Yeah, I, I think it's needed, obviously, for the school, it's going to enhance the area, in my opinion, this, the water management system should make it better for the neighbors. I'll be voting yes for it.
Would you also like to frame a resolution, please?
Would I? All right, application, let me get the right one, 25.42 Franciscan Sisters of St. Elizabeth, to permit, 499 Park Road, permit Block 166, 135.1, preliminary and final major site plan and moving soil permit, a resolution to allow.
Seconded.
Berwick.
Yes.
She croaks.
Yes.
Azarella.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willen.
Yeah, just before I vote, I think it's really unfair to have three smiling sisters in the audience, how the heck can we ever vote against that? So I vote yes.
We see them at St. Anne all the time. Brynani.
Yes.
You'll be prayed for, word.
Yeah, right.
We need them, we need them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck, everybody.
Next, your jury?
Motion.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Here we go.
He knows.
Good night, all.
Good night, David, say hello to Nancy.
Yeah, we'll do. We're headed to Knoxville, Tennessee, next week.
Oh, okay.
Going for my granddaughter's wedding.
Oh, beautiful, beautiful.
Good night, see you one Sunday.
You guys have a good night, guys.
Yes, 10:30, miss. Yes, oh, see you then, bye-bye. Good night, John.
You guys have a good night, thank you.
Good night, that's 28 hours.
Thank you. You guys have a good night.
I pray.
I figured I better bring it up, because...